Call this meeting to order. Wednesday, June 14th, meeting in the Hamden Planning Board. On our agenda tonight, under item one, administration, minutes from our meeting on May 10th, 2017.
Overapproval.
Motion, motion and seconded. Any comments? Amendments? Okay. All those in favor? So moved. Okay. Item two is old business. We have no old business to discuss today. Our public hearings for the ordinances have been pushed to the following meeting. Is that correct? Under three, new business, we have a public hearing, set preliminary subdivision plan on the Cushing Family Trust, proposed 11 lot subdivision with a new cul-de-sac off Constitution Ave, with reconfiguration of two existing lots on Constitution Ave, on a portion of the parcel 641A, and on parcel 6A56 and 6A58. This is phase three of the Colonial Heights subdivision. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing, ask to hear from the applicant, or his or her representative, Mr. Kaiser.
Anything more, members? My name is Jim Kaiser. I'm here representing the Cushing Family Corporation. Just to make a small correction, Gene, you introduced, you mentioned it as corporate, the trust, and it's actually the corporation is their company's name.
Okay.
We're here tonight to present a 11 new subdivision lots that will constitute phase three of Colonial Heights subdivision. We're reconfiguring two lots so we can provide an access through the already approved subdivision. Those two lots will be reconfigured and still remain into the program, so that there'll be a total, not new lots, but total of 11 lots, 13 lots actually in this portion, with two being amended from the previous project. We're planning to construct approximately 970 feet of road that'll end in a cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac is being restricted from further extension by only providing for a 30-foot width at the end of that, so that we can extend utilities into remaining lands of the applicant. This is an area where it wasn't deemed that it should go further. I don't think the town has ever indicated that they want it to go in further towards Mayo Road, so this seemed like a good ending point for this portion of Colonial Heights. We've provided that road design. It'll be having full sewer, water, and storm drain access. We've provided foundation drain access for all the homes because of the soils in that area. Although they are readily buildable, they do contain a high water table because of the clay nature of the soils, so we are providing access either through the back of the locks, through open drainage, through gravity drains, or gravity drains into storm drain system on the upper side of the subdivision. I think we've gone through and addressed most of the comments that staff has made. There's a few more in the memo that are outstanding, that we will certainly work with staff to get corrected or straightened out, so that we're all in agreement at that point in time, and be more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this point in time.
I'll probably ask if there's any other proponents of this application. We're on item one, preliminary subdivision plan for Cushing Family Corporation. If there's any opponents, or anyone with general questions or concerns regarding this application. Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing, and ask Karen and Miles if you could give us an update, where we stand.
Okay.
I'm not going to read the, my report, because it's too long. But at this stage of the game, I left for you on the desk tonight, the letter that we received from Woodard and Curran on the final review of the revised plans. They still had a few comments, and it also included a list of issues that I'm sure that Jim is happy to talk about with you tonight, in regards to responses to Woodard and Curran's I've also included a map, or two maps, showing with the, you have color copies, I believe, and with the orange dots, those are the parcels that have downstream potential impacts of this site, and you can see that there's not very many, there's not a whole lot of downstream, downstream impacts. I prepared that map, so that you would have a better sense of what kind of downstream impacts there possibly could be, based on Woodard and Curran's letter. Because that was one of the concerns that they had raised, is what about the downstream, you know, what kind of downstream impacts do you think could there be? And frankly, I think they're minimal, if any. And other than that, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that the board might have.
Am I also correct that there was a hearing regarding this, with regard to the wetlands as well?
There was a, it was a public meeting, was it not?
As part of the DEP wetland permit application, we were required to hold a public meeting, which we did on the application. That application has been issued at this time, so we do have a permit for the wetland impacts on this project. I will note that the DEP does not require a stormwater permit for this project, so they don't feel that stormwater impacts are considerably of a concern to the state, as far as the size of this development is concerned, and that's why there's no permit required by them. And that's why we're asking for a waiver before the Planning Board to conform with the state requirements, rather than trying to get two different requirements put together for projects, per se. I think in the past, the board has gone along with that on other projects, and we ask that that be considered again tonight.
So, just to be clear, the waivers that you're asking for tonight, one would be the stormwater concern?
Correct. One would be stormwater, one would be sidewalks, and one would be existing vegetation, yeah, existing vegetation for trees over 12 inches in diameter. And I can talk more if the board has questions about any one of those.
Yeah, if you could speak, obviously, seeing this report from Woodard and Curran, if you could respond to those, if you haven't already.
Yeah, I think there was actually, I think, in stuff that you left, or that Karen left for you this evening, has an email that I provided her shortly after I received the Woodard and Curran comments. One of them, they extended the fact that they didn't have the information to determine our watershed areas for the property, and we did provide that as part of our submission. Either they overlooked it, or hadn't received it, but we feel very comfortable with what we've done out there, as far as sizing of the storm drains, even to the point where they mentioned that one of them, I had a typo on, that was a 12-inch, we actually sized out a 15-inch, and so obviously, if the 12-inch works, a 15-inch is going to work also on it, so. And then, we have provided, through Sean's comments, a detail of our underdrain out there. We feel with that underdrain, it's a very similar drainage system to what we provided in phase two of Colonial Heights. That system has been working, I think, very well. The road has held in there extremely well, considering how the first phase was constructed, and the issues with pavement issues out there on the first phase. The second phase has been performing very well, with the way the drainage is designed, using perforated pipe along the sides of the road. This particular phase, we're only going to use it on the uphill side, because downhill side all drains off, and there is a portion of Constitution Ave that is in a similar situation, the further end, after you make the turn going around the corner, the low side just drains off to the side, and then back down through the yards, side yards of the homes, and the uphill side has perforated drains in it to assist in the stability of the road structure. And we have provided that perforation, and the means to drain the base, subbase gravel into that perforated system. There was a comment about providing, I think, set elevations on foundations. I have gone through and done that on numerous subdivisions, as required by municipalities, and most of the time, it gets lost, or developers, or not developers, but homebuyers ignore it, their builders ignore it, they set them at where they want it to be set, whether it's for a cost savings, or particular, your particular satisfaction they have, those get lost. And so unless the town wants to take the responsibility to see that each of those foundations is set at a set level, we have provided access to them, which is readily available into the storm drains. If their contractor makes that acknowledgement, they can all get in by gravity. If they don't get in by gravity, and they want to set their building lower, there certainly is the aspect that they could put in a sump pump and go non-gravity. I don't know many homeowners that, given the option, will not take the gravity drain into the system. So that's what we're, we've proposed. If it's something the board deems as critical, or the town code office wants to take on the responsibility of setting those foundation elevations, we certainly can establish foundation elevations for each building. But like I've said, it's usually been a fruitless effort on our part, every time we've tried to do it.
Thank you, Jim.
I think that covers most of their specific concerns on it, from that standpoint, so. And I think on comments that came out originally, I think Sean had one concern about the depth of the ditch line, and I need to sit down and talk with him, because I don't think a three-foot ditch in a residential neighborhood with small lots like this is probably what anybody wants to see, so we need to discuss that a little bit more, but certainly by the time we get back for final, we'll have that all clarified up with the, with the town staffs, to an acceptable solution for all parties. The other waiver, being a sidewalk waiver, there's no sidewalks within Constitution, or Colonial Heights being the three roads that are in there now, so it didn't seem that it would be appropriate to put a sidewalk in that leads to nowhere. It adds for additional maintenance costs by the public works, having to move their equipment in and out of that subdivision to plow 900 feet of sidewalk, and we haven't been to the situation where the town has seemed to do it. That subdivision has people walking the streets all the time. I came over here, there was a couple walk in the streets, and there just hasn't been a real issue on it. It's a very slow-moving area. I myself live in the subdivision, so I have firsthand experience with what the traffic and everything movement is in the subdivision, and we walk it continuously, and we don't see really an issue with it. And that area would definitely be a dead end, so it would even be less traffic than the main portion of the subdivision is concerned. And then the last waiver was for 12-inch delineation, 12-inch and larger trees. The site was harvested last year. We had some tree cover identified on the property, but the site was harvested last year to avoid conflicts with the most recent listing of endangered species being bats. They get into a question when you start doing permitting on whether you cut trees during the active level, or active season of bats, which basically starts in around the end of April, and proceeds into October. So if you harvest trees during the winter time, you avoid those conflicts with that endangered species, so the additional scrutiny required by the state and federal tends to go away. And so, with the change in tree levels, or tree canopy, we took the tree lines off of the plan, because they weren't really accurate anymore, and in the past, the board hasn't necessarily pressed the requirement to have 12-inch and larger trees identified. The other aspect, when you're dealing with quarter to third acre lots, is that there's really not going to be a lot of tree saves on the lots, because the fact that, you know, they're small lots, and it takes up a lot of the lot when you locate the house on it, and the earthwork associated with it, so there's really not a lot of tree saves that are even available, if we were to find larger trees that may warrant some, you know, potential savings, so that's a basis why we requested the waiver on that.
Any additional questions from the board, for the applicant? Okay, so basically, tonight's call was looking for a motion, either to waive these provisions, and then I would say have the applicant work with town staff to finalize some of the rest of the concerns, and come back with a final plan. At this point, I entertain a motion?
Yes. So moved, as you stated.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Okay. Peter?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jerry votes yes. I almost had to check, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing, item B, conditional use. Tricia Carver, for the conversion of an existing single-family house located at 11 Ball Field Road, to a two-family dwelling, under the provisions 3.7.6 of the Hamden zoning ordinance in Residential A District. So at this point, I open a public hearing, and ask to hear from the applicant, or, yeah, the applicant at this point. Tricia?
I didn't bring a picture of my house, so, but I did, however, bring, am I allowed to?
Sure.
I was asked to bring a revised copy, indicating that there are, in fact, four bedrooms in the house, in accordance with the Septic Plan that we have.
Thank you.
This is a little smaller than the plan that you originally had, but basically, the change is, one bedroom is an exercise room, which is actually how it currently functions. So if you see in the other plan, this one, the only change that I made there is just to say that there are, in fact, four bedrooms in the house. So, if you, I don't know if you had the opportunity to review my application, but in it, I did write a little letter indicating why I'm asking for this. The way my house was constructed, we finished the downstairs first, so we already have a certificate of occupancy for that downstairs dwelling. It's where we lived, where we then completed the upstairs of the house, and then we've been up there for about a year and a half to two years. We have a second certificate of occupancy on the upstairs of the house. My situation now is such that I, in order to stay in Hamden and keep that house, it would be really helpful, if not essential, to have, to be able to use that downstairs level as a rental property. And as I said, just because of the way we constructed it, everything was almost good to go. So once I put in the application, I did talk with Jason Lundstrom, because there was not a clear delineation in terms of person safety, so, and fire code. So last weekend, we put in a 90-minute fire safe door in between the downstairs and the upstairs, and Jason and one of his coworkers came over yesterday, and made sure that the smoke detectors were connected upstairs to downstairs, and downstairs to upstairs. So Jason felt comfortable that everybody would be safe in the event that there was a fire in the home. As I said in the application, I think, I believe, that this all is within the spirit of Residential Zone A. I'm certainly not looking to develop anything. One of my former volleyball players, I coach at Maine Maritime Academy, is looking for a place, so it's a nice fit. She's going to start teaching at Herman High School, so if the opportunity presents itself, then, you know, we're looking at one additional person in the town of Hamden. So I don't think that's going to increase the population density by any substantial amount. The one thing that I did note is the downstairs entry, there is a large workshop downstairs, and so she would enter through an exterior door there, and then pass through another door to get into her, what would be the rental area. That workshop isn't space that's used, it's called a workshop, just for a name, so there's some storage in there, but that's, that's my case, those are the details, so if you have any questions. Miles has been there, checked it all out.
Thank you. Any questions before I ask?
Where's the entry for the upstairs? Is that the same door?
No, the entry for the upstairs, can I come show you? See, I should have had a big picture. I knew it. The entry for the upstairs is on the opposite side of the home, so.
In the mudroom?
Over here. Yep.
Okay. Okay. Being a public hearing, anybody else speak in favor, in opposition, or have any general questions or concerns? So far, so good. I'll close the public hearing, then. And Karen or Miles, if you could speak?
Just a couple clarifying things for what she said there. The original downstairs was permitted, and given a COO by Ben Johnson many years ago, and then we have since issued a full certificate of occupancy for the entire structure, so it is permitted, and has a full certificate of occupancy for the structure. I have spoken, and Jason spoke to me yesterday, and he is satisfied with what has been done there for the needed one-hour fire separation between the dwelling units, so.
So town is recommending approval for conditional use?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You'll note that in the materials that I left for you tonight, there was a note from Jason regarding the, his inspection yesterday.
Any questions, additional questions from the board? Concerns, okay. Mike?
Maybe we could get a bit of an overview from our town planner, with regards to this, and how it.
How it fits.
Fits in with our ordinance, especially with respect to the rezay.
Yep.
Kind of true.
The, well, two things, actually, as you recall, the zoning ordinance has just been changed to allow for accessory apartments. This application was submitted before that went into effect. That actually went into effect today, and our town clerk is currently in the other room madly getting everything ready to post online tonight. But at any rate, the, with this, it is in the Residential A District. Conversions of a single-family to a two-family in that district do have restrictions in regards to the amount of space that can be used. It has to be subordinate, there cannot be a change in the exterior appearance of the structure, and so on and so forth, that would make it look like a duplex. And my review of the application, found, I found that all of the criteria have been met. The draft decision, Tricia, this is yours.
Thank you.
The draft decision that was in your packet, I think it was in your packet, maybe it wasn't, anyway, did I leave it out on the desk tonight? I'm sorry, I've been doing so many.
Planning Board order, is that what?
Yes, the Planning Board order for Carver.
Yeah, I believe it was, yeah, it was in there.
Goes through the findings, the necessary findings of fact for the, for the application, and it is a conditional use permit that's being issued. The particular property is located on Ball Field Road, or actually kind of off Ball Field Road, off, behind the, behind the field itself. It's, I don't think it's visible from anywhere, except the sky, you know, birds can see it when they're flying overhead. I think that there would be essentially no impact whatsoever on any of Butters, or on the neighborhood.
I have a question on that, Mr. Chairman. When you come off of the Ball Field, and yours is one of those houses there, or there are two houses? How many houses in that one little section?
It's one house out centerfield. If you hit a really long homerun, you'd hit it. So it's the long driveway.
We're going back the other, we're going back the other way, back towards Old County Road?
Correct.
Okay. I was thinking, back the other way into the woods.
Yeah, there are, there are three houses in there, but my, the Old County Road neighbors are closer than the neighbors on the other side of the Ball Field.
So yours is the house adjacent to the left field fence, sort of?
It's adjacent to the water tower.
Let me go up that one.
Yeah, the driveway is just past out, is just past left field. Yep.
So in your packets, there's the finding of fact, we'd be looking for a motion to approve this use as a conditional use, to convert the single-family home into a two-family dwelling. As described, the findings are found in the board order, which satisfy the new, our new, well, the changes to our ordinance. And that was effective today, you said?
Yes, the, this application is going under the old regulations, if you will.
Okay.
Because it was submitted prior to the effective date of the new one.
But it meets the new regulations and the findings.
It actually does, yeah, it actually does meet the new regulations as well.
And the findings reflect that, essentially?
The findings reflect the old, the old ordinance.
Okay.
That's the proper way to do it.
Could, could we have a finding in there that also meets the new ones?
I suppose, wouldn't hurt anything.
It wouldn't hurt a thing. I mean, we're not grandfathering anything, let's make sure that everybody knows that we're not.
That could be part of your motion, Kelly?
Part of my motion, so moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? Okay, call for vote. Kelly?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Carver, I have one question for you. I stopped by your house last year when I was campaigning. Do you still have your electric cars?
Um, yeah.
Still happy with them?
Yes.
Just checking.
Yes.
Hesitation there.
Okay, item three, are, are still under new business, see, make sure I have the right agenda here. Amendment to subdivision approval for Riverview Heights, Perkins Drive, to remove the conditional requirement, Lot 3, to have a site plan with the building permit. This is not a public hearing, so do we have the applicant here to explain what we're looking for? Or representative?
Well, my name's Mike Griffin, and I hadn't planned to necessarily, being a spokesman on behalf of this, but I'm happy to do so. I was hoping to be a fly on the wall and just grab my order and rush to the registry tomorrow morning. I practice law in the town of Arnau. I've done it since 1974. And I, part of my practice includes reviewing titles on behalf of people who are purchasing property. And the couple that I'm taking care of is a person by the name of Alan and Alice Pearson. And they're buying a property that's located at, on Perkins, on Perkins Road. And if I recall, we're at 27 Perkins Drive. Is that right, Mr. Block? 27 Perkins Drive? And that, we're on Lot 3. And I, in the process of doing this, even though my eyes are failing me a little bit, I saw two notes on a plan of nearly 10 years ago that caused me to pause. And for those two notes that appeared on that plan of 2008, that's the reason we, I'm trying to appear before the board tonight and ask for the amendment of this plan. And I need to know, if I may, what's in your package that y'all received from this town here? What items did y'all get from this item? Just, I don't know when I give you things that you don't agree with. Good, you got my letter. You got, is this the letter concerning this particular item?
Yes.
Yes.
The letter from Miles.
I haven't seen that, but I trust it's in good order and everyone's happy. Is that correct? As you see your letter? Do y'all support what this man hopefully? So the item, and I'm going to send it around to y'all, that we're dealing with is this plan here, which was, which got approved by this board in 2008. And when you squint, you can see that under the general notes, it says a declaration of covenants and restrictions for Riverview Heights subdivision, Phase 1, and Hampden will buy two lots 1 through 5, and 56A, and will be recorded in Penobscot Registry Deeds. And I've looked hard and wide, but there is no declaration of covenants. You don't have to have declarations of covenants. And from all we can tell, it was one of these gratuitous things, that perhaps they were going to put declaration of covenants, but they didn't. So that's the one item. Just need to clarify that that's not a requirement of the subdivision. After all, we've already had one lot that's been sold there, and they didn't notice that little note, but I did. And then the, the second note that's of concern is that it says on Lot 3 shall have a professionally-designed, prepared site plan provided by the developer and submitted to the town of Hampden with the building permit application. Well, building permit application was issued because of the antiquity. I'm going to pass this around so y'all can sort of see this. The building permit act was issued, and I don't think anyone knew that they had that note on that plan. And the good news is, in a way, we have the site plan because this was done by Jeff Rice, and it shows us where our house is in relation to the river, and it's a long ways away. I think if I had to think about some, a place that I never was in 2008, I suspect that folks were concerned, gee whiz, where's this house going to be in relation to the river? And lo and behold, we're significantly away from that. So this, these two notes are what's causing the mischief, and that's the reason I appear before you, and I'm happy to try to address any questions that y'all have. You have some two-aches, folks. They're living in the house now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, I know you did some research on this, so I'm going to let you have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, in the packet, package of materials that I gave you tonight, you know, all this stuff came in at the last minute, so it was not in the packet. Just the letter from Miles was in the packet. But I've included a map from our GIS that illustrates where Lot 3 is, and I've also included excerpts of the 2003 subdivision plan showing the general notes. Note number one on that was in relation to the declaration of covenants and restrictions. And I've also included excerpts of the 2008 subdivision plan showing the notes. Note number one is the same thing, or very similar, anyway. And Lot, note number 11 is the one in regards to Lot 3. I've also included the planning board minutes from October 8, 2008, when the planning board had approved that, the 2008 plan. And highlighted towards the bottom of that is a sentence that says, "It should be noted that the plan also calls for a site plan for construction of the riverside lot at the end of the new cul-de-sac. This is provided to make certain that development of that steep slope on the lower side of the road does not cause either a stability or drainage issue." So it was a steep slope that was a concern that caused that note to be put onto the plan. Didn't apparently have anything to do with the proximity to the river. And then I've also included, in regards to the declaration of covenants, I included the, a copy of the covenants that was submitted on May 22, 2003. In the minutes, in the review of the minutes that I did on that, I found that there was some discussion, primarily one of the abutters to the subdivision at the public hearing had raised the question about it. It was discussed a little bit, but it was never discussed again. The planning board did not include anything in regards to covenants or whatever in their, in their discussions leading up to the vote on the subdivision plan. However, given the fact that there was a note on the plan, my understanding would be that the planning board had understood that there were, that there was going to be covenants on it. That said, the town doesn't get involved in covenants, and to a certain extent, it really doesn't make a whole lot of difference whether there's covenants there or not. So.
Mr. Chairman, I note from the minutes that Mr. Kaiser was involved in this process, and maybe we could hear from him.
Yeah, there's your name on the bottom of the letter.
So is Mr. Weatherby.
I thought it was on you. I can stick her up. I can't remember. I don't know about it. My name's Jim Kaiser. I thought that was my plan when, when it was being passed around. The discussion on the site plan, and I think, you know, the fact that the property's been built upon, a little bit of an oversight as to whether the plan was prepared. But the discussion was that that house would be set down below the road on the first plateau, and then there's a fairly steep banking going towards the river from there also. So it was kind of a steep slope off the road, and then a plateau, and then a steep slope down towards a river. And so kind of the combination, getting a building that would fit in that plateau area was a little bit of a concern for the board, not just on that amended plan, but on the, the original plan also, if I remember correctly. So that was the basis, was trying to be, have some control on how they developed it down there. And I think from the standpoint that it was built up above, near the roadside, basically took away, I think, from some of the concerns that I would have had, or even the town would had, on the construction of that aspect of the, the building on that. And so therefore, probably the, the fact that there was this much less concern about having a site plan for that particular property. I did the septic on it myself, and that was set in there below the house. So, I mean, there was plenty of room even off the road to put the house and then put a septic down below on that plateau and make it all fit in there fairly well. So I think overall, from the last I had seen the house, it fit into the property pretty well, overall, and will probably be a, a nice home for the people buying it. So if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Avery, looks like you have a thought.
Oh, no. Well, I mean, I've, I've driven up in there, maybe some of the other board members have, and I've seen the home, and it does. My unprofessional, non-engineer opinion is that it was designed well and fits in well with topography.
Any other questions on the board or concerns? Be looking for a motion, then. Sounds like you were starting one, Mike.
Well, I guess the motion's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Peter.
No, you go ahead.
No.
I'll prove my point.
I'll make a motion that we make the amendment to the Riverview Heights subdivision to remove the condition requiring Lot 3 to have a site plan with the building permit.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Miles?
The, the other part of that was.
The declaration.
The top part about the declaration of covenants. As Karen said, it was submitted with the plan, but it was never recorded by the developer.
Okay.
So at this point, there is none in there, and they just like some clarification.
Sure.
That it wasn't a requirement of the planning board to have that.
Okay.
And I would modify that motion to... How would we, how would we handle this?
Remove the requirement.
Remove the requirement or waive, waive the requirement?
If you look at, if you look at the second page of what Karen handed out tonight, there's a, kind of a draft order or a draft amendment that has been.
Got a lot of paper in front of me.
Sorry about that, yeah.
I, I have it on the back of the letter, I think. It's front and back, I believe it's just.
Oh, it's, it's in with Mike's letter here?
Yeah, it's right in the back of it. So we're asking for further amendment to delete in entirety the general note 11. And in addition, to general note 1.
So we're...
Like, on note number 1, I think the, the board has two options. One is to delete it. You're deleting note 11, you might as well delete note 1. Or you could state in the record that the board is clarifying that it's not actually a requirement, but I can't necessarily agree with that because if it's listed on the plan and the plan had been approved by the planning board in 2003 and in 2008, then it's kind of hard to say that it's not. So I think.
What would be the best approach?
I think the best would be to.
For the registry, if anybody was to look at this down the line?
I think it's best to delete it. I think it's best to delete it.
That's what I think.
Mike, do you have any thoughts on that?
That's fine.
What the best way to handle this from a title point of view with respect to the recorded subdivision?
And there's no question that, one way of looking at it is how's town, town planner calling it. I, I have seen on occasion that they'll, they'll put that type of language in, not as a requirement, but just an indication that perhaps the declaration of restrictions would be put in. But I'll tell you, whatever is in the opinion of the board, either way, that would work out just fine from a title perspective.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like our, Karen, your thought was just to delete?
Yeah, my thought is to delete note 1. Now, the question that I have, and this is probably a question for an attorney, is whether you can make a modification in handwriting on a document that's going to be signed by the board, and if that would be recordable at the registry.
I don't know why we couldn't, you couldn't do a...
You can delete, you can strike it, and write it with your hand, not a problem, as long as you agree.
Okay. So that means somebody else has to do it, not me. I have terrible handwriting.
Okay, and we have a copy of those plans, or we will have a copy. We'll need a Mylar, I assume, or no?
Well, that was a, that was kind of a question that I had, is whether the Mylar itself needs to be revised, or whether just this document would do that. He did note at the bottom of this, of the amendment to Riverview Heights subdivision plan, note to registrar, please index this amendment under map file 2008-210. So if it's indexed under that, as well as where it's recorded in, in with the documents, then one would think that it would be caught, so that it would not be necessary to amend the Mylar, but.
How, how would it be caught, Karen?
You might know better.
So this, this document right here would be registered with the deed in reference to that?
If it's recorded at the registry?
Yes, that's the idea, is it's going to be recorded at the registry.
Okay.
And the, the point is that it would be, it would be referenced to the subdivision plan.
Yes, yes, as long as it's recorded at the registry, I would think it'd be, correct, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going to be looked at and confirmed that it's indexed appropriately.
Good.
Miles is in the process of making the modification to the document.
So I would make a motion that...
Well, now you have the emotion, we get a motion in second, we can either...
I would like to rescind the first motion and make a new motion that...
Better.
Sure.
You okay with that?
Sure.
That the subdivision plan for amended Riverview Heights 2008 be amended in accordance with the document that our town planner has prepared that deletes general note 11 and addition general note number 1. And that, that document be recorded in the Penobscot County Registry of Deeds, following the signatures of the Town of Hampden Planning Board. Long-winded most of them.
I'll second that.
And Miles, you've amended that slightly. Okay. And the amendments that you're making are?
That second paragraph, or third paragraph will say, in addition, general note 1 is also deleted on map file 2008 dash, 210.
This is the document I'm looking at, correct?
Correct.
Essentially, um...
So Miles, just making that change to that document, as long as that's okay with you, Mike?
What was, what was the change?
Third paragraph.
Third paragraph will now read, in addition, general note 1 is also deleted on map file 2008 dash 210.
So initially, the, the recommendation was to say we weren't required.
Thought it worked as it was.
Instead of just removing it.
Okay.
So you're okay with that amendment?
Peter?
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, I was in favor. Mike?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim? Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Okay.
Mike, we meet on the second Wednesday of every month. Why don't you come back and help us out more often, okay?
Always looking for new members.
Mike, are these your original documents?
They are.
Okay. Item four, yeah, I got the right one. Item four is ordinance committee report. I don't know if you're prepared for this, Mike, but... Is there, was there an intent there, Karen, or Mike?
So the ordinance committee met on May 16th and discussed the proposed definition changes regarding transfer station and solid waste. And voted unanimously to send this to the planning board for public hearing with a recommendation ought to pass. That public hearing had been set for tonight. But the, we messed up, and the newspaper notification did not get into the newspaper. So it was not advertised correctly, so it has been pushed off to the next, next meeting, July. The ordinance committee also discussed a new draft of a dimensional table, which I had put together, which is going to go along with the use table when we get it done, as replacement to Article III. That's something that, the whole, the whole of Article III is currently on my plate. That's my top priority in regards to zoning, to get those changes into, in place. It's probably going to be the rate, with everything that's going on around here, it's probably going to be a couple of months before I'm ready to bring that forward to ordinance committee. The ordinance committee meeting that would normally take place next week, we don't have anything new to put on the agenda, so we might as well cancel that meeting. I'll let Mike do that. He's giving me a thumbs up, so that's canceled. The other zoning amendment that is on the docket for public hearing in July is changes to the certificate of compliance and change, and certificate of occupancy stuff, which the planning board had discussed a couple of months ago.
Okay. We'll consider that staff report is now. Anything else on the ordinance? Okay. Staff report?
I sit here long enough, I can think something.
It's all right. Miles, you good?
I don't have anything for you guys.
We might make it out in record time, so. Uh, planning board comments. Mike? Kelly?
None for me.
Tom?
None.
Peter? Jim? Uh, the only question I have is, I think about this time, are some of our terms end? Is that correct? So I think we have, at least have two people that would have to re-up.
We have, let's see, Michael Avery, Mort Seiverson, and Kelly Wiltbank. Terms expire 2017, and I've been told that it's the end of the year. It's the December when that will happen.
So they'll be getting a letter, and we'll encourage you to re-up. Okay. For some reason, I was thinking it was July, so I'm happy it's December.
Yeah. There is a person who is, has applied for the planning board that will be going before the Planning and Development Committee of the Town Council at their meeting next Wednesday. It's a woman, but I can't remember her name.
Okay.
So.
Excellent.
Are we not full yet?
Yeah, would she be replacing, or she's just an alternate?
It would be an alternate. We currently, we currently have one alternate. Tom was an alternate, now he's a full member. And Andrew Scott is a current alternate, and we have one vacant alternate seat.
Yes, I apologize, Tom, I did not announce you as the full-time member at your first full-time meeting.
Once a month, I'll give it to you.
Okay. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before everybody leaves, we have signatures that we need from you, so we will pass these sheets down. And if you can sign both of them, one is Carver.
Three of them.
Yes, three of them. One of them is Carver's approval, and the other two are the approval for, I've forgotten your name already, Mike.
Mike. Okay.
Regarding the subdivision.
So moved on the adjournment.
Moved, seconded, all those in favor? Video over.
Thanks for your song. Gene, if I can have that one? You totally recuperated now?
Uh, getting there.
Who's Tom?
Just went to the bathroom.
No.
Hey, Gene?
Yes?
I had done that in order for preliminary plan.
Okay.
The subdivision regulations and the files and stuff that look to build a project, and do some, some sort of approval on preliminary plans. My understanding, your action tonight was that you granted the waivers, and basically told, told Jim to work with you after to make sure that everything's fine in the final plan.
Just three?
Is that right?
Yeah.
This will be, this can be modified for the final.
I, I would just modify for the final. I mean, the minute, the minutes are reflected that we approved the waivers, and that we gave them general direction. And there was only a couple items left to address as far as town staff, and that was in your recommendation. So as long as those go in with the minutes, I think that's all we need.